Okay. So I guess we'll get started. We're a tiny bit behind the schedule, so thank you all for being here. And so this is the regular meeting of the Missoula County Public Schools School Board. And twice a year, we try to make sure we can get up to Sealy to see how things are going here. And so I want to thank the student trustees. They gave us a great tour of the building and the changes that are being made, updated us on programs, and thank you so much for taking the time to do that this afternoon. We really appreciate it. And so... And we really know Chance's real name is Chance, not Chase, so... But he's being chased for tonight. And so now we'll go turn to the agenda. So the first thing on the agenda is the call to order, welcome and roll call. Roll call, we're missing trustees McDonald, Duggar, and Wake. Is that it? And everyone else, is he?
Diane.
And trustee Lordson is out of town as well. And so everyone else is here. And so now we'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance. And do the student trustees mind leaving us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any request from any trustee to make any modification to the order that the agenda is set? Seeing no one making such a request, then we'll go ahead and just follow the agenda. The next items are approving minutes. For A are the minutes from the special meeting of September 11th, 2018, that are found beginning on page four. Any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from September 11th Special Board Meeting? Moved by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Sturbis. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the special meeting on September 11th, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present, Lenora. Then we move on to the regular meeting that followed the special meeting on September 11th, 2018. Those minutes are found beginning on page six. Are there any requests for any corrections to those minutes? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting from September 11th? Moved by trustee Kendall. Seconded by trustee Decker. All those in favor of approving the regular meeting September 11th minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to the regular meeting on September 25th, 2018. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Seeing no comments. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September 25th regular meeting? Moved by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Newbold. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the regular meeting of September 25th, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we come to the time in our meetings for public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone in the audience who wants to comment on anything that impacts your school at Sealy or Missoula County Public Schools generally, that isn't going to be something we're going to be talking about later in the meeting, that our schedule allows us to provide public comment at the beginning and end of each meeting. So any public comment on non-agenda items? And if you can go over to the podium, I don't know if we're recording this, but if you just want to state your name, and if you have an unusual spelling of a first or last name, if you can spell it for our secretary. And if you do represent an organization, if you can let us know. And other than that, just...
Okay. My name is Steve Johnson. I'm a business owner in Sealy. I have a sophomore girl at Sealy Swan, and I have a wife and teacher at Sealy Swan. And my comment is, there's a rumor going around that this may be Dr. Pacora's last year at Sealy Swan, and she may be moving into retirement. So rumor has it. I just want to comment on the last time we... Or not we, you were, I guess, the community chose Dr. Pacora to lead Sealy Swan. It was a little different program, I think, as to prior years, or prior selection process. And I would like to... I'd like to see us follow that same sequence to do it when Dr. Pacora came up here. I guess they all came up here.
They interviewed her.
I think having the students and the staff included in doing that makes them feel like they're part of the process. And I would like to just say, I'd like to see the board follow that same process again, if she chooses to retire. Or when she chooses to retire. So that's really all I have to say. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none. Then we'll go ahead and... If I be, there was no written correspondence. So Dr. Pacora, tell us what's been going on up here.
Not much, and that's a good thing. Welcome to Sealy Swan High School. As always, it's a pleasure to have you here. It has been a much calmer start to the school year. We had no fires, no evacuations. All in all, it was a wonderful start to the school year. For six years now, we've been tracking our final semester grades to keep you updated on the academic progress of our students. In the fall of 2013, we stopped giving Ds, D grades, and only gave F grades if students failed at the end of the semester. So three years ago, we also modified our schedule and went to a four-plus school week with an intervention on Friday mornings. So in looking at our statistics and the data, in 2013, we had 9% of our students failing a class. And we implemented the new grading policy and the Friday intervention, and each year, that number of students who were getting Fs at the end of the semester went down. Until 2017, we were at .8%, and we were hoping that we would get to zero. However, last year caught us all by surprise, and that didn't happen. It went back up to 3%. So we knew during the school year that our students were not doing as well. And by spring, it was clear to us that our student demographics had changed. As we got to know our new students a little bit better, we found that over a third of them, in our freshman class alone, lived with people who were not their parents, and that many of them had experienced some type of childhood trauma. So we did some investigation. We did a lot of research. And one of the things that was particularly impressive to us was a video. And it was, the woman speaking, it was a TED Talk, was Dr. Nadine Burke-Harris, who is a pediatrician. And this is a YouTube video. You can watch it. We were really impressed by it. It's called "How Childhood Trauma Affects Health Across a Lifetime", and very agreeably, this is what she said. "We found that in a research study conducted by the Center for Disease Control in the mid-'90s, that childhood trauma dramatically increased the risk for seven out of 10 of the leading causes of death in the United States. It affects brain development, the immune system, hormonal systems, and even the way our DNA is read and transcribed. People who are exposed to ongoing childhood trauma have tripled the lifetime risk of heart disease and lung cancer, and a 20-year difference in their life expectancy." So at that point, we said, wow, we know that there are problems, and we really think that we need to deal with this somehow. So we researched trauma. We wanted to discover how it impacts academics, and then decide how we were going to address the problem here. So at this point, I want to introduce several teachers to you. They went to a conference in July. They spent their own time to do this. The conference focused on social and emotional intervention for schools. And at this point, I'd like to introduce Chrissy Quinn and Mike Haynes. Annette Johnson also went, but these two are going to be talking to you about what they learned this summer. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go first. I'm going to read you something that was published in the New York Times in 2015. The title of the article is "Teaching Social Skills to Improve Grades and Lives". One major result that they found of implementing social and emotional learning is that children who scored high on social skills were four times as likely to graduate from college than those who scored low. These findings add to a growing body of evidence, including long-term studies drawn from data in New Zealand and Britain, that have profound implications for educators. These studies suggest that if we want many more children to lead fulfilling and productive lives, it is not enough for schools to focus exclusively on academics. Indeed, one of the most powerful and cost-effective interventions is to help children develop core social and emotional strengths like self-management, self-awareness, and social awareness, strengths that are necessary for students to fully benefit from their education and succeed in many other areas of life. So we went to this conference, and it's called School Connect. And it's catered towards high school students, and they focus on five competencies: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So two of the most influential competencies for kids who have experienced adverse childhood experiences are self-awareness and self-management. So kids who have been through trauma tend to go through what we call emotional hijacking or flipping their lid. So when they are in these situations, their limbic system, which is really the survival mechanisms of their brain, kick in. And the whole cerebral cortex that is associated with higher-order thinking goes right out the window. And so this program is really trying to teach kids to recognize when they get to that yellow zone or get to that point, and take a step back and focus on that responsible decision-making instead of making impulse decisions that could really affect their lives later on. And so that's something they've seen a huge increase of with kids who have been through trauma. Also, there is a significant difference between acting instinctively and emotionally and acting rationally. So many of the rational decisions that we make have to be taught. The things that we're born with tend to be sadness, joy, disgust, anger, surprise, fear. And those are primitive emotions. Whereas when we learn things in school, in social-emotional learning, we learn humility, forgiveness, empathy, optimism, compassion, sympathy, patience, shame, cooperation, and gratitude. And we've noticed that a lot of these kids haven't been getting these lessons, and they are not acquiring these skills that are going to set them up for success. And so setting them up for success, I'm going to introduce Mike here, and he's going to go on a little bit more.
Okay, I'm going to read some stuff to you. We had, it was like a great conference, probably one of the best ones I've been to, and just really informational. In addition to teaching these crucial social-emotional skills, School Connect goes further to help students make these three connections often missing when coming from a background of trauma that helped them set up for success. There are three key connections that students thrive on. One is a connection with a caring adult. Another one key is a connection to a positive peer group. And the third key is a connection to a goal after high school. What they had us do at the conference, like, they had us raise our hand. They thought, think of a student in the last year that struggled. And then he had us raise our hands. There were a bunch of teachers in the room. And you had to put, like, if they had three of the keys, or two of the keys, or one, and then there's zero. And around the room, like, if you can think of someone that struggles, raise your hand and one finger up in the air. There's a lot of one fingers, zero, stuff like that when you looked around the room. And then they said, then he said, now, think of a student that is successful. How many keys do they have? Predominantly, there was threes around the room, so, with those, keeping those things in mind. That was one of the things they had us do. Social-emotional learning has significant impacts on your future success as adults. When asked, the most important skills we teach as teachers and professionals want from our children, these are the ones, they had a list of about 20 of them, and they had us pick out the most important ones when we were at the conference. And these are the ones they said were the most important. Oral communication, reading comprehension, and English professionalism, work ethic, teamwork, collaboration, ethics, and social responsibility. So those are the things we concentrate on. Employers, they also talked about employers. Employers have been shifted, they're hiring for content-based skills or basic knowledge to applied skills. Most likely employers will have to teach their business content. They're saying employers are finding that EQ, their emotional, social things, are more important than their IQ. And what they said is, most people are smart enough to do the job, but they're getting fired because they don't have the social-emotional skills to deal with other people. So that's what this class is about, is the EQ versus the IQ. School Connect is research-based and has been linked to significant improvements in academic and behavior. So some statistics they gave us, Demonte Ranch High School in Nevada saw significant improvement among their students after implementing a social-emotional advisory program. The results were published in the Aspen Institute Magazine Edition called "Caring Communities", linking school culture and student development this year. Research links SLE, social-emotional learning, to higher student success. And it showed these statistics: 23 percentile point increase in SLE skills, a nine-point gain in attitude about self and others in school, a nine-point game in pro-social behavior, an 11-point game on standardized tests, math, and reading. And it reduced the risk for failure. And they have statistic, problem behaviors went down by 9%. Emotional distress went down by 10%. So they had those statistics out there for us to look at. Before I close, I'd just like to thank Dr. Pacora for choosing me to go with this. Like I said, some teaching profession things, I've been to a lot of them. Some are really good, and some aren't so good. This was a pretty good one. So I just want to say thank you for choosing me to go. We saw students talk about, a panel of students talk about how it affected their lives. And they all were trying. It was amazing. And then they had teachers that we met that had been teaching for about four years there in Nevada when we went to the conference. So it was a pretty powerful conference. Do you like it?
Yeah, just seeing those kids, they, some of them had been from what we would call a nuclear family, right? A really stable home, and some had not been. And across the board, these kids had said that this program, because this was implemented in this particular school as a freshman seminar, so they had it every day. They said it was the best thing that they ever took in high school and really set them up for success. And a lot of them were seniors talking about this. It was incredibly emotional, right, multiple times. And they told us their favorite lessons that we had, which was pretty cool. And to have those teachers there talking, the Demonte High School, the principal who had implemented it was there, and was just super gung-ho about it, was like running around the room, telling everybody how much she loved it. So to see the passion from these people was great, and it really was an awesome conference.
The same principal she's talking about, she went and hired this guy that taught us, developed this program, and she brought him in to teach her teachers because she wanted to do her value. That's where the statistics come in from, what they say, so it was pretty, pretty dope.
Thanks. Thank you. And just to pull this all together, some of the other staff members did a book study over the summer, and the book was focused on children of trauma. So we came back together in August as a staff. We had input from the three who went to Nevada to this particular conference on School Connect, and talked about the book study and what we had learned. And as a staff, we decided that this was a direction we really felt we needed to go. And School Connect was probably the answer that we found. It was not additional work for our staff, but it was a very complete program. And so we changed our schedule once again. And on Wednesday, every Wednesday this year, we are meeting in our, we call them SEL groups, social-emotional learning groups, and following the curriculum from School Connect. And as you heard, it's research-based. And we've met how many times?
Four.
Four times?
Four, yeah.
Four times already? And it so far has been very positive. Our seniors, we've talked to them about being leaders in this program, and they have pretty much taken on that role. You might have seen in my classroom at the end of the hall, the senior list of...
Social contracts.
Yeah, the social contract. See, they know all the right words here. The social contract that the seniors decided they would work with. And they came up with those five rules, or whatever you'd like to call them. And they call each other out on things now, and they're learning how to do that appropriately. So I think that as the year goes by, and we're all hopeful at least, that this is going to make a difference for our students, both socially and emotionally and academically. So that's where we are and where we're heading this year.
Thank you.
Do you have questions?
I was just going to ask. So trustee Decker, then trustee Smith?
Can I sit in the class? Is that allowed? I truly could not be more thrilled. I'm just over here wanting to applaud the whole way through. I could not be more passionate about the importance of putting relationships first. I'm putting children's social and emotional learning first, not only to respond to trauma, which is critical in all of our schools, but to support kids into the 21st century economy. This is where that, social and emotional learning is not extra, it's not layered on top. It is the baseline, it's the foundation. I'm thrilled that Sealy is nimble enough to immediately adopt a program like that. And I think that our urban schools and all of the kids in the urban schools who are even more at risk of being lost in the cracks of a much larger school community desperately need this kind of program. So I applaud you, and I cannot wait to hear how it goes, and I'm absolutely thrilled.
Thank you. We'll let you know in the spring.
Okay. Trustee Smith?
I did have a question on your, on the Wednesday meetings. Is it the whole school that takes part in the program? Is it focused?
Yes, it's the entire school, 9 through 12, we meet by grade level. The program is sort of set up that way. And we felt that at least the first year through, rather than mixing students who are at different points, to keep them with their own grade level. And we'll look at that as we go along and see if that needs to change. But right now, I think it was the right choice to make.
At least in the beginning, definitely, to get the whole school involved.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you for that update, and we are optimistic about getting to hear some really good data and reporting back in the spring. So thank you so much for taking the time to realize that the situation had occurred and that it needed attention. And it sounded like not just giving it attention, but in a very professional manner, and taking the appropriate steps to make sure that it's a program that is supportive, so that it supports your students. So we really appreciate that you and your staff have done. Thank you so much. Anyway, I want to clap for you too. So now we move on to reports. So we have the student trustee report. So we have three student trustees present, and the other trustees have sent their reports up, so we'll have them read as well, or summarized. So Sealy Swan first, and then Sentinel second.
So I'll start with our report, and then we have Chance is going to elaborate on something else. So the 24th through the 27th was our homecoming week here at SSHS, and that was a pretty busy week for us. The 25th, the seniors attended the college fair at the University of Montana. And so that was a really good experience for us because students got to talk to colleges that they were interested in, as well as explore new options that they might not have already considered. There's a lot of colleges there. And then the next day, we had our discovery day, which Chance is going to talk about more next. We have a fun little poster. So that happened all day long. Yeah, they'll elaborate. And then that Saturday of homecoming week, our football team got their second win of the season. And so their overall record is 2-5, and they beat Victor that day, so that was a really good win to have for homecoming. And then our cross-country team has also been very successful. They competed Saturday as well in the Mountain Westy in Missoula. And they're doing well individually, placing consistently. And so that's really impressive, given that we have a pretty small team. And then our girls volleyball team also brought home a win on Saturday night, and they took down Hot Springs in five really tough sets. And so their overall record is 9-3, and right now, we're first in the conference. So that's really exciting to be heading into tournaments in a couple weeks. Our Leos Club advisor, Ms. Stone, had been gone for the first couple weeks of school. She had shoulder surgery, but she is back, so we are getting our Leos Club rolling again. So that is basically an extension from our Lions Club here in the community. So we're based out of the high school. It's all students of the high school, and we like to do service projects throughout the community wherever we're needed. And so Saturday, October 20th, is the first day of rifle season, when you hunt. So we're going to be serving country's breakfast at the Senior Center from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. So that should be a success. Student Council Blood Drive, we spoke about that in the last meeting. That was a pretty good success. We ended up having 22 people donate blood. And we plan on hosting two more in the community this year, and the next one should be in December. And then I was going to touch back on the SEL, the meetings. We started doing those on Wednesdays. And we've just kind of been talking about social skills and how to be more considerate of others, you know? Like, are you just aware of yourself, or are you aware of your peers and how you treat them? And just how to better manage yourself and your work and your stress, and just review and learn some social skills that are really necessary to have in life. We did focus a lot on like handshakes and first impressions, because that's completely necessary to know how to do that for job interviews. And just, it's a good skill to have in life when making new connections. It's been a really positive thing in the school. I think students are reacting to it well. It's just really important that we can kind of be together more and have kind of a sense of unity. And in our senior class, one of our rules is that everyone has equal opportunity to speak. So having that standard really helps that all students have, are getting the most of their education and can share their thoughts and benefit from other people's thoughts who may not speak as much. So that's been a success so far, and so hopefully we can continue to keep building on it. Yeah, Chance is going to talk more about discovery day.
Okay, so we made this poster. A couple of our yearbook people had taken photos throughout the day, just to document what we did and make sure that everybody, like, swing it off to the community if they really wanted to look. I'm sure with a Pathfinder, we'll have a couple pictures. But so discovery day was on September 26th, happened to be my 18th birthday. So yeah, it was pretty interesting. But we had, the whole entire school was split up into these different groups. And we worked with the Montana Conservation Corps with some of these jobs. We had some people from them come and help us while running the job. But we also had selected student leaders from each group that were selected to basically run the group and be like, kind of leaders, kind of motivate other people if they were lacking, or show like respect to people who were doing good and calling up and stuff like that. And I was one of these leaders. We actually had to create a fake scenario, survival scenario, of a bear attack. Basically, like, some real things that could happen on the trail and all this stuff. It was pretty interesting. We had some interesting builds, and it was overall fun. But we had several different groups. We had one go to Big Larch. Ashley's group went to Big Larch. They were restoring campsites and picking up sticks and logs and raking and sweeping on pine needles. There's been a lot of logging down at Big Larch. They've been thinning out since the recent fire. I think they're taking more precaution now, trying to thin out, shred out trees a little more, pick up debris. And our next one was at Salmon Lake. We don't have any pictures. These are just select, there's only three groups here. But at Salmon Lake, a group cleared some trails over by Salmon Campground and stained all the picnic tables, remade malnights, and picked up litter on campgrounds. They got ice cream afterwards, too. Next group went to Morel Falls, and Mr. Haynes talked about, he was a good teacher there. And they had the whole... And they, they had the whole beam, what, these big old wood beams up to a bridge, footbridge up on Morel Falls Trail. They had to implement those and had to take several trips up and down to get them back. And then the canoe trail, out here in Sealy, out by the ranger station, was worked on. They cleaned up, cleaned up all the brush, like, trimming the brush, making it, keep away from the trail, filled in these divots in the trail, anywhere they saw fit, buckets of gravel and stuff. And then my group went up to Camp Paxton, and we actually had two groups up at Camp Paxton, which is a big draw. We had to spread gravel over the dirt. If you've ever been to Camp Paxton, there's a lot of dirt and, like, loose dirt. So like, when the, like, wind would blow, they'd all set a cabin and make everything dirty that they just cleaned for making people who want to rent it out. So it was a nuisance. So they had our groups basically fill in this entire parking lot with gravel over it, so we were shoveling gravel all day. And when we finally got that done, we managed to pick up some sticks around the camp, around the different cabins, and then we repainted all the benches over there, refurbished, like, repainted them all. And, yeah, so this is the canoe trail. This is one of our working places, the Big Larch, and this is, I think, Monture Bridge. So, yeah, if you want to take up for the meeting, we'll have this poster up if any want to take a couple of that.
Thank you. That's great. Thanks for your report.
It was really good, I'm sure. But it was just really good to like see, to help clean up, because, I mean, community service always makes you feel good, and like, most of the kids in our school have lived in Sealy, lived in their whole life. So it's kind of rough when you see these areas that you've been around your whole life, kind of be like not as tidy as they should be. So it's really, it was a good experience for us.
Thank you. And what's going on at Sentinel? Thanks, Maddie.
All right. Good evening. October is already off to a busy start at Sentinel as fall sports and activities have ramped up for the season. Cross Country has continued to perform exceptionally. At last week's Capital City Seven by Seven Invitational, the boys placed second with Andrew Lingle, Adam Lingle, and Tanner Clump, all in second place in their individual races. And Kate Lindsay and Lillian Commons also placed third in girls. Brooke Stainer currently holds Sentinel's freshman all-time, and Junior McKay Hunter holds the fastest time on the varsity team. Cross Country's upcoming meet will be held on Wednesday at the Linda Vista Golf Course at 4:00 p.m., followed by senior night. The state meet will be on October 20th in Missoula. Girl soccer beat Hellgate 2-0 last week, a major victory over Hellgate's undefeated season. Girl soccer is currently preparing for the playoff season, which begins this week. Junior Asley Allen is currently the second-leading girl scorer in the state. Golf finished an outstanding season this month. Boys took second place at the state tournament with seniors Jack Johnson and Emily Garden in second place individually. Freshman Joe Openshaw was awarded All-State with 14th place finish. Spartan football is also wrapping up a successful season with four wins so far. Most recently, Sentinel defeated Hellgate in a 28-14 win. Sentinel will take on Billings West at the MCPS Stadium this week, followed by senior night against Helena at the MCPS Stadium on October 19th at 7:00 p.m. Juniors will also take the PSAT this Wednesday as practice for the SAT, as well as to qualify for National Merit Scholarship. This year, Sentinel seniors Oliver Chin, Lauren Badger, and Maddie Braun were named National Merit semifinalists based on their scores from last year's PSAT. These students will be eligible for national scholarships if they reach finalist status. Sentinel Orchestra and Band will be holding their fall concerts on October 15th and 16th prospectively at 7:00 p.m. This month, Sentinel would also like to shine the spotlight on Sentinel's Environmental Action Club, Ego Club. Ego Club has taken on numerous initiatives in order to increase environmental awareness and sustainability at Sentinel and in Missoula, including ink cartridge recycling, trash pickup with community members, and eco-friendly classroom certification. Ego Club has worked with architects to incorporate the LEED Dynamic Plaque, which collects data on Sentinel's sustainable practices and scores the school out of 100. Ego Club has been recognized for their efforts with the Most Community Engagement Award from the U.S. Green Building Council, a $1,000 grant from the National Wildlife Federation, and a Green School Scholarship equivalent to $20,000, and invitations to green building expos and conferences in Chicago and St. Paul. Ego Club's faculty advisor, Mr. Benjamin Cummins, was named a U.S. Green Building Council Board member this year. Sentinel is thankful for everything that Ego Club has accomplished at Sentinel and in the community. Sentinel wishes you the best this October, and we look forward to checking back in next month. Thank you.
Thanks, Maddie. And then I'm not sure who's got Hellgate and who's got Big Sky and...
I have Hellgate.
Okay.
I am pitch hitting for Miles Miller, who's the chairman, I want to say, but he's, that's not what it is, of the, of the cross-country team.
Captain.
Captain. That's what I couldn't remember. Okay, for Miles. Hellgate is opening to an exciting year. Construction will be finished in December. Our student government is planning a school-wide celebration once the constructions and our new Commons area is finished. Students have transitioned to accept new policies enforced by the administration to match construction changes, including restrictions on passing time area and a new late-work policy. In terms of athletics, the cross-country season is running really smoothly, and the athletes are making great strides forward. The team is going to compete in their city meet this Wednesday. The girls' team may win state this year against the Bozeman Hawks, who have won state for 11 consecutive years. Soccer is likely off to win another state championship for boys and girls. They have done a great job accomplishing their goals this year. The volleyball team has been performing well, despite hitting a few bumps occasionally when they lost games. Our football team kicked off a successful season. They finally won a game on homecoming week. This is the first game they've won for several years. They've really been working hard to have a great team this year, and it's paid off. Besides football, we had very successful homecoming week overall. Our bonfire went smoothly, besides unintentionally burning a large section of grass. Our student government introduced a new costume competition for the best-dressed person every day of our spirit week dress-up. To wrap up the week after our unexpected football win, National Honor Society held a very successful homecoming dance, which acted as a fundraiser for the club. Overall, academics, activities, and athletics have all been going very smoothly. We still have a lot of time left in the year, and it's already looking like Hellgate is off to a great start to the school year.
Thanks. And Big Sky?
And I'm pinch hitting for Eloise Mitchell from Big Sky. So she reports in sports. Football, their homecoming game is this Friday, and the soccer teams beat Crosstown Sentinel. Cross country, senior night race is tomorrow at Linda Vista, as Maddie alluded to, and volleyball is wearing pink night for breast cancer awareness. In academics, the Health Science Academy is going to Seattle and are just beginning to plan their trip, and they all went to the job fair at the university. In senior projects, advisor contracts and mentor proposals are all in, and seniors are beginning to accumulate their hours on their actual projects. The science group did a glacier volunteer field trip, and in the International Baccalaureate Theory of Knowledge and Senior Arts Studio, they took a field trip to the Blackfeet Pathways Art Exhibit. In the extracurricular category, student government sponsored a homecoming float, which you may have seen last Saturday. Special Olympics and their cooperative soccer team was participating, and of course, the marching band was in the parade as well. Key Club did a Minute to Win It fundraiser for their thirst project, and Drama is, has a production tomorrow night called Half Moon. And Enquirer and Band All State is happening next week. So overall, the atmosphere of Big Sky, they have a new fall sports trophy case, and during homecoming this week, they've had a pie-eating contest, games and painting. And I believe it's tomorrow, they're sponsoring the first annual Gridiron Girls, where the girls are on the football field with the guys coaching, and the students all get to watch and experience the event. That's it?
And any other reports that I'm missing? Seeing none, then we move on to announcements from superintendent James.
Thank you. I can't help but comment on Hellgate's football program. They had a 57-game losing streak. And not only did they beat Sam Arda in their streak, but then they turned around the next week and won a second game over Billings Skyview for their first two-game winning streak in 12 years. So kudos to the Hellgate football team. Page 19 in the packet has a number of calendar items, two that I think are of significant importance. Next week, Thursday, the 18th of October, and Friday, the 19th of October, the certified staff will have their annual teachers convention in Billings, and the School Boards Association, the school administrators of Montana, et cetera, will participate in the Conference of Education Leadership in Missoula. Students will have Thursday and Friday as non-scheduled days. This is a great opportunity for professional development for a variety of staff, and a number of staff will participate. And I know a number of those members of Greg's unit will be partaking in those opportunities. We have a second board meeting in the month of October, scheduled for Tuesday, October 23rd, and we'll be returning to Missoula for that meeting. Hard to believe we're approaching first-quarter conferences, but the calendar reflects November 7th, 8th, and 9th as conference days for Missoula County Public Schools. I would like to direct all trustee attention in particular to page 20 in the packet. Lenora has gone ahead to schedule all trustee building visits for the year. Tonight, of course, is our official visit to Sealy Swan High School. We have grouped the local urban schools in groups of three primarily for those visitations. We've added a couple new visits this year. If you know, Wednesday, November 7th, we'll go to the Voag program, as well as Garden City Harvest, new facility on River Road. On Thursday, March 7th, we'll visit Jefferson, which houses our preschool program for students with special needs, as well as our early kindergarten program. And then we'll go to the other end of the spectrum to look at adult learning at the Dickinson Lifelong Learning Center. Our intent is to ask trustees to look carefully at the proposed schedule. We would ask that each trustee sign up for multiple visits. We recognize that you can't obviously make all the visits, but one of the required elements for a trustee is to do a facility assessment each year. So the main factor behind the scheduling is to allow you the opportunity to see facilities and understand facility condition. So we'll have Lenora survey trustees by email, and we'll look to fill out the calendar, and we would encourage you again to sign up for as many of those visits as possible. Thank you.
Thanks. And now it's 7:00 C on the agenda, announcement from trustees. Are there any announcements from any trustees? Seeing none, then we'll turn the page over and move on to item eight, the consent agenda. And this is, it's an elementary action item only.
Correct.
Okay. And so on the consent agenda, are items that we see on a routine basis, so that we don't have our board comment about them. But any trustee who wants to discuss it can just pull it off the consent agenda, and then it's just treated like any other agenda item. Otherwise, although we don't have any discussion about it, since we see these proprietary matters on usually a monthly basis, the public is free to comment. And so it's a list of students who are residents of MCPS and who are requesting to attend other schools. We often have a parallel item on the consent agenda of students from out of districts who are asking to go to school in Missoula, but this time it's just at the elementary level. So is there a motion to approve the attached list of students requesting to attend other school districts from an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Second by trustee Decker and trustee Newbold? And as I said, we won't discuss them, but if there's any public comment? Seeing none, then all trust, elementary trustees in favor of approving the list of the students requesting to attend other school districts, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to the elementary trustees present? Now, when I use that term, it just means that there are some people on our board that can vote on every item. There are other people like your representative and like me, because I represent an independent K8, that we only vote on high school issues, so that's the difference in the voting practice. Now we move on to, to approve the out-of-country travel request, and Mrs. Robitaille is going to remind us that we saw Brendan Work at the last school board meeting, and he gave us a preview of the fact that this was coming, and explained the reason why it's coming in a little bit after the six-month schedule, but because it was a coordination of a number of schools, it, it got kind of moving from building to building, took a little bit of time.
Thank you.
So if you wanted to remind us?
You can find the actual field trip request on pages 26 and 27 in your packet, with the exact dates over spring break. And just to remind you, these are students from all three urban high schools, and all three urban high schools principals supported this request, as do I. It's with a very reputable company that Mr. Work used last time, and the goal is to go to Jordan for this trip. And I believe you heard him speak about it, and all of the information's in there, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
And trustee Decker?
I, I very much regret that I was not able to be at that part of the meeting last time to be able to hear Mr. Work talk about the trip, because when I saw it on the agenda, of course, I had a million questions.
Oh.
However, one question that I do have is whether MCPS has a policy about male and female chaperones going on a trip of this nature, and whether it is typical to not have a second chaperone identified at the time of approving a request like this?
This far in the spring, I don't believe there's a policy specific to it.
There's not a policy regarding gender. We will look for additional chaperones, and again, dependent on the number of students who actually opt-in, that will determine the total number of chaperones. But that will be addressed as we move forward.
I'd be happy to report back to you on that. Do you have another question?
I have a question or just a comment. I think especially in visiting a country like Jordan, which is a very safe country for that region, but we are talking about 50 miles from the Syrian border, 75 miles from the Iraqi border. A female chaperone who can help students be cognizant of some of the really challenging dynamics of being a female traveler in that part of the world. There also are times and places in a country like Jordan where males and females will be expected to be separate, including potentially for dining. And so I feel like that would be an important piece of this request that is not complete. That's, because that's a concern I have.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
And so I think the administration can come back and just give us, as the date for the trip comes up, would you mind coming back with just a short update to make sure that those concerns were met? Is that okay?
Through that.
Great. Any other questions first, before we take a motion? Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, then is there a motion that the trustees approve the out-of-country travel request submitted by Brendan Work, who's the Arabic teacher for the district? Moved by trustee Kendall, or I guess trustee Newbold, and seconded by trustee Kendall. Is there any board discussion?
Yeah, I will be voting for this right now, because I feel that it's incomplete, and I feel that it needs to have, that's an important piece for me, just to make that clear.
Any other board comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the out-of-country travel request, please indicate by raising, oh, I'm sorry. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the out-of-country travel request, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is all trustees except trustee Decker, all those opposed. And that is trustee Decker, for the reasons she had stated. And so the motion passes. Then we move on to the finance, operations, and maintenance category of our agenda items. And the first is to award a bid for asbestos abatement of the administration office, North and South, which is the new code for the former Missoula College, two buildings. And so Burley, I know that we were expecting that this would be coming in. Do you want to explain how the bidding process went and...
Yeah, bidding process went pretty well. We had five, five bids, which is actually a very good turnout. We, we took those bids and we looked at how they're delivering the project and what was best interest of the district. We took Lois' bid, which was with Missoula contract, or abatement contract, just Montana. They'll be bidding, or abating both. The north building is about 90% of the project, as there's asbestos in the sheet rock and flooring and that kind of thing. The south building, there is very little, a little bit of piped station, I've missed out, but not very much. They plan on starting this project towards the end of the month or early in November?
Any questions for Burley? Trustee Kendall?
How many of our buildings had asbestos that needed to be updated during this, these years of renovation in the last four years?
Every single one of them.
Every one of them. And what is the range of... And what is the range of, of prices that we paid for those? Do you have that?
You know, I don't have the exact number, but I know the number we budgeted for just about every project was a hundred and fifty thousand. A couple went over, one being Hellgate. I'd have to look and see what the other ones were, but.
Just a ballpark.
Just quickly, I think Hellgate might have been the only one that went over by, by maybe double. But it's all been a hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. It's kind of where we budgeted it all.
Have we worked with this, this contractor before?
Yes, many times, many times.
Any other questions?
I may just add a statement. With regard to asbestos, we are required to, and we do have an asbestos management plan for each of those buildings. So asbestos is fully contained, it's not considered friable or a health risk in its current condition. It's when we disturb it for construction that it becomes critical that we abate. So just because of the presence of asbestos does not indicate the presence necessarily of a health hazard in any of those buildings.
Yeah, and as a school, we were required by law to have those buildings, to have those plans. They're all located in my office, and we update them every three years. They get updated. We update them as we abate, but we update them by law every three years. You have to touch and see every, every piece of asbestos in the school every three years. You have to touch it, look at it, feel it, to make sure it's not disturbed. It's, it's quite a process. And we've actually been able to piggyback that process onto the bond projects as we have our assessments done of our facilities, kind of helps us kind of kill two birds with one stone. And so at the end of the bond, we'll actually have a nice, new binders up to date and be compliant.
Any other questions for Burley? I had just one, Burley. You said it was a pretty competitive bidding process?
Well, I don't know if it was real competitive dollar-wise, but when you have five, five responses, or five responses were very well, yeah. There was quite a bit of difference in the dollars, that's why we wanted to make sure we vetted the project, make sure that the numbers made sense and were accurate, and they were.
Okay. Thanks. Seeing no other questions, then is there a motion that the trustees award the abatement con, award two abatement contractors of Montana with the hazardous materials abatement project at the administration, the going-to-be-new administration office, North and South, in the amount of eighty-three thousand and seventy-one dollars? Moved by trustee Kendall. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Service. Is there any board discussion? I'll just say I'm glad we're moving forward on this. Any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of awarding the contract, or awarding a contract to abatement contractors of Montana in the amount of eighty-three thousand and seventy-one dollars for the abatement project at the new administration office buildings, North and South, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees president, President Lenora. Then we are getting the new acronym FFNF.
FFNE.
Furniture, oh, yes, FFNE, the furniture fixtures and equipment bid for Washington Middle School. And so the recommendation is to award Missoula's Office City for the contract for Washington Middle School's furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Is there any additional information we need, Burley?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. The architects work very closely with the staff to see what their needs are within the facility, and we put that up for bid. Oftentimes, fixtures, furniture, and equipment come back jarbled because one company can't handle the entire bid, or they specialize in one product or the other. We were fortunate this time with the Missoula Office City, being able to handle the complete order.
Any questions? That just answered my question, because in the past, the past several we've seen have been broken into three separate parts. But this, they were able to bid everything?
Right, yeah, it was nice, makes it easy on our end.
Any other questions for Burley? Seeing none, then is there a motion to award Missoula's Office City the contract for the Washington Middle School's furniture, fixtures, and equipment in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-three cents? Moved by trustee Smith. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. Then all those in favor of awarding the contract to Office City, please indicate by raising your hand.
Elementary.
Oh, thank you very much. And so let me make, yes, elementary only. Thank you for catching that, trustee Service. And if we can just put the hands up again, just so I make sure. So it's unanimous as to all elementary trustees, Lenora? Thank you for catching that. And then the item number three is information only, and it's about the district boundary study. So Superintendent Thane, do you want to give us kind of a preview?
Certainly. Very brief report. You may be aware that we are doing some work in the background to plan for the potential for a boundary study. When we approach the fall of two thousand and nineteen, all nine of our elementary projects will be completed. We'll have enhanced capacity in a number of our buildings. All nine elementary schools will be, let's see, I guess outfitted with twenty-one regular education classrooms for a capacity of approximately five hundred students. So we think it's an important time for us as a district to review our attendance area boundaries, to see where we're pushing up against or exceeding capacity at areas where we have additional capacity. We have conducted, as of tonight, two focus groups to start talking to those school communities about what might occur with regard to a boundary study. We also have surveyed parents in the elementary district about interests with regard to a boundary study. That information, along with some meetings we've had with potential partners, will be used to inform a plan that we intend to bring to the board October twenty-third for your consideration. If, in fact, the board approves moving forward with a review of elementary boundaries, we would want to conduct that work through this winter and spring with a final report and potential recommendation to come before the Board of Trustees in late spring. One of the important elements in the process as we're proposing will be some additional focus group work, and then a couple community-based open houses as we move forward, and then some specific meetings at each elementary building site to review what the implications might be for any community that would be impacted. So again, just wanted to give you an overview, let you know that that's on the horizon, and that we will come forward with a full report and recommendation for the trustees October twenty-third.
Any questions for trustee, Superintendent Thane? Trustee Decker?
I'm just curious, as to, I know that you've mentioned in our, our meetings before, where we've talked about properties that are unused currently, you've mentioned the possibility of at some point down the road, Mount Jumbo School being reopened. And I'm curious as to whether this boundary study encompasses talking with people who live near Mount Jumbo, talking to people in the east Missoula area, that sort of thing.
That will be one of our interests. I think that's an important part of the conversation.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Superintendent Thane? Trustee Kendall?
Will that include Prescott?
Likely not at this point, since that's a leased facility, and we do have some ongoing concerns about the infrastructure at Prescott, so likely not. Sure.
I'm curious about the order of operations. We've finished, or we're closer to finishing construction work at the elementary level, so that obviously plays into this. But elementary boundaries have an enormous impact, of course, on middle school boundaries and middle school attendance, and I'm wondering about which direction the dominoes tumble?
They'll tumble that direction, upstream. So part of what we'll discuss on the twenty-third is what the implications of an elementary study might have for middle school. As you know, Washington is under construction presently, but neither Meadow Hill nor CS Porter have initiated construction. So any potential boundary changes are likely a year out. So the intent would be to look at the K5s initially, and then determine what the implications might be for middle school. And I suspect that there's potential that in year two, not only would we look at middle schools, but we would consider looking at high schools and whether or not there's any need to adjust high school boundaries.
Any other questions? Seeing none. We'll look forward to revisiting the Sentinel's board meeting. Then we move on to personnel negotiations and policy. Attached is the personnel report that we see. We see a routine personnel report usually each month. This is the personnel report for which period of time? It's just not in the notes.
It would be for last month.
Okay, for September?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the personnel report for September. So is there, are any questions for Dave, or is there anything unusual about this particular?
Very typical report.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the items on the personnel report? Moved by trustee Smith and seconded by trustee Decker. And we don't allow comment on individuals who are in the personnel report as a matter of privacy, but if anyone has any general comments from the board? Seeing none. Any public comment? Same restrictions apply. Seeing none. Then all in favor of approving the items on the provided personnel report that begins on page twenty-nine, please indicate by raising your hand.
Thank you.
And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we, again, allow public comment on any non-adjunct item. If something has popped into your mind that you'd like to let us know about things in Seeley High School or Life in Seeley, you're welcome to have comments at both the beginning and the end of each meeting. So feel free, if you want to say something, to go to the podium. Seeing no one jumping to their feet, we are adjourned. Thank you so much for hosting us here.
Thank you for dinner and.
Thank you for everything.